She was not coming?
Okay. Good afternoon. This is the school board briefing Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021. It is 1:02 PM. And first on our agenda for the briefing, and actually the main item is redistricting. And so we have three presenters, actually four presenters. We have a representative from Davis Demographics on the phone. Welcome. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Glad to be here.
And introduce yourself, please.
We have David James with Davis Demographics. We're your county's demographer. Been working with your district for about a year and a half and is a consultant here on this redistricting project.
Thank you and welcome again. Okay, we have Dr. Denise Carlin, who is Chief of Staff. We have Mr. Jared Eady, who is Director of Diversity and Inclusion, and Ms. Kathy Eba, who is Director of Planning, Growth, and Capacity. So I'm just going to, who's our main presenter there? All right, Dr. Carlin's the main presenter. I'm going to turn it over to her and thank you very much for being here.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Board members, Dr. Savage and Attorney DePree Bruno. We're pleased to be here with you as part of our third briefing on redistricting. And we are excited because we're going to continue to move forward in our discussions and particularly with a focus on our seven maps today as well as the option of developing your own map. And that's really the context in which this conversation will occur today. So if we can move forward with one of our next slide. So our agenda today is just a quick review. You've seen this timeline multiple times. We're just going to take a quick peek as a reminder relative to if you go with one of the county maps, we have a particular timeline. If you decide to design a map of your own with Davis Demographics assisting, then we have a little bit of a varied timeline. We'll talk with you just to review your considerations for today. Mr. Bruno is going to take a moment just to review, so it's top of mind relative to the legalities associated with redistricting. We'll take a quick peek at the maps one more time and then we, this is where we'll spend the bulk of our day on number five, really having some in-depth discussion about redistricting, where you see your perspective as board member, and then hopefully we will have some consensus to move forward at this point. And then we'll talk about next steps and we'll call it a day. So if we can go to the next slide. As we talked about, we do have our two different timelines. There's a lot of alignment certainly there. We're here today to talk a little bit more about our maps and to go a little more in-depth. You do see on the 16th, if you just decide to go with one of the county maps, we will come back to you on the 16th and say, okay, if you're going to go with one of the seven, which one? And that's really where we're looking for decision-making and full consensus on the 16th. Then we would return on the 7th for a public hearing and then that would be your opportunity to adopt your map. Conversely, on the other side of the coin, if you decide to create your own map, we are going to have a very in-depth discussion about that today. Davis Demographics is prepared to take your direction. He will have some very specific questions for you. We will spend a significant amount of time in that area. On November 29th, we would appear back before you with a tentative map based on your direction and then we would push that public hearing and school board meeting, the adoption meeting, back to the 13th of December. That would allow enough time for Davis to get feedback from you on the end of November, make any last-minute adjustments, and be able to deliver a map to you at that time. So we just wanted to clarify some of the changes in the timeline. So really, this is what we're talking about today. There are options in front of you. We've talked about this before. You do have the option to adopt the county's map and as of last evening at the six o'clock meeting, the Board of County Commission has made a decision that they will be bringing forward map number five, which is the least change map, and that is what they intend to bring forward at their adoption meeting. You also have a choice where you may utilize one of the other maps, map one through four or six through seven. Those are also at your disposal. The third area, certainly we had a, we had a community presentation last night. There was not a map that accompanied that presentation, so we kept that. We had to turn this in a couple of weeks ago, so we just kept that in as an option, but we do not have an official map that was submitted last night. So we'll bypass that option. And really, the last option, as I said, is about you creating your own map. So those are the conversations for us today. So I'm going to turn it over to Attorney DePree Bruno, who's going to just remind you of some of the legalities associated with redistricting and then we'll get into the meat of our conversation.
So the main thing, just to remember that this is about equal population and to make sure that we don't dilute any of the minority voting strength and make sure that our districts are contiguous and that we do that balancing act between the Voting Rights Act and the equal protection clause. We want to make sure that the districts are compact, use as much of the natural and man-made boundaries such as streets, et cetera, as much as possible. Preserve, if you want, the core existing district boundaries and do our best to avoid splitting communities of interest. And again, we have that balancing act and that dance between the Voting Rights Act of 1965 and the equal protection clause. And what we really want to make sure is, one, not to make race the predominant factor in the redistricting. It can be considered. If it is used, then you have a constitutional issue where the review will be via strict scrutiny and then you would have to prove that there was a compelling state interest to allow that consideration of race to be the predominant factor.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Board. So David and I are going to now present once again the seven maps for consideration. These include the five maps that you've already seen that were developed by the county and then the map that was developed by NAACP and the map that was developed by Commissioner Hammond of the Board and County Commissioners and presented to everyone at, two weeks ago at their last meeting. So alternative map one. David, do you want to walk through this?
Alternative map one, reminding you, looking in the bottom right corner tells you the area of change. So this is over 112 square miles of change, pretty drastic compared to the other scenarios. You also see the difference from target. The target's roughly about 52,000, so you can see the plus or minus, but they're all within the proper variance. So just the blue outlines, remember, are your current boundaries and you could see the shifting a little bit between certain areas. In this alternative, you see that kind of larger area, the south of Lehigh Acres. Not much is developed there yet, but there could be potential development there, so keep that in mind. But right now, we're balancing, remember, on current population, not based on future population. Let's move on to two. And just so you know, I can't see the map, so just guessing here that they're been changed. On alternative two, you can see a much smaller area of change. So these are one of, I think, three maps that are very close to your current boundaries, less disruptive. So you can see the, again, your outline, you can see some slight adjustments. It doesn't take much to make your boundaries be compliant based on the 2020 census, but kind of take this into account that this is one of the lesser adjusted boundaries of the different alternatives. Let's go on to the next one, three. Three is also a little more radical change, about 93 square miles change. The obvious difference on this one is it takes the northern part of Fort Myers or Tice and keeps it not tied to whatever you want to call it, District Four across the river. There's adjustments also in the San Carlos area. All of these five scenarios pretty much keep Lehigh Acres intact. And just to remind you, you always are going to have to split to the, sorry, the Cape Coral area because again, it's over that, so I think it's about 200,000 or 300,000 people, so it has to be between two different districts. It also ties in the island areas a little bit more. The direct path to Sanibel is tied into the lower part there with, that's red. A little bit of that is shared with the lower part of Cape Coral. So it's a little more dramatic changes, but that's a viable option. But like I said, 92 square miles of change. Let's go on to four. This one also, very little disruption, only 16 square miles of change, little bit of adjustments between each of the areas, not much geographic area changing. So one of the least disruptive in terms of your boundaries and maybe where board members reside of your scenarios. So keep that in mind. And then we'll move on to five, which from what I heard was the chosen one by the County Commissioner's Office. This one is the least disruptive in terms of square mileage. The bulk of the change is happening between District One and District Four with little adjustments between the other three areas. But again, the least disruptive, keeping your same boundaries kind of intact with a slight change. And the variances are very small, they're almost right on to the target of about 52,000 people per area. Let's move on to six. This was the one that the NAACP map submitted to the county. This does, again, disconnect that northern part of Fort Myers from across the river, but now this one connects it more to Lehigh Acres. Not all of Lehigh Acres is completely in that one zone. It's split up between one of these districts, five and districts four. And you can see District Four covers more of an east-west pattern, which goes from the northern part of Cape Coral all the way out to Alva and the Lehigh Acres as well. Fort Myers is kind of split between the area five and two down there, and then you can see the southern part as well. So again, you're tying in the southern part of Cape Coral with the islands similar as in other ones as well. And all the numbers kind of do balance in this scenario. Looking at the last one, alternative map seven. This one is the one that I think one of the county commissioners submitted himself. You know, very, five very distinct areas, the numbers balance. Again, it keeps that area from connecting from Fort Myers to North Fort Myers. Doesn't cross the river there, kind of does in the lower part there, though. Keeps Lehigh Acres intact. Got the southern area down there at the bottom, keeps all the way from Benita all the way up to San Carlos and Sterro and covers that whole area to the east. But this is a very dramatic, drastic, both of the scenarios, six and seven, are quite a bit different from your current boundaries. So keep that in mind. The numbers do balance in terms of population, but it is more disruptive, if you will, radical change compared to your current zones. So I think we said, I forgot the numbers, but five and four and I think one or two, I'm trying to remember which one, were the ones that were least disruptive. And then you have three or four other scenarios that are very, very different than your current boundaries. And we'll pass it on to the next section.
Is that he, the goal here was to try and do the best of his ability to keep the jurisdictions, the local municipal jurisdictions intact. And aside from Cape Coral, he was able to accomplish that. Again, David just mentioned Cape Coral would have to be in two different zones because of the population of that community is such that it wouldn't fit in one, but that was, that was his, and I'm just echoing the statements that he has made on the record and that that's where he was looking for here. The other thing I want to reiterate is when we talk about redistricting, and we've had some questions from the community about this, so I'm assuming that so have you, when we're talking about redistricting here, we are talking about a legislative political boundary change. We are not dealing with a school-based change. We are not talking about where kids go to school. We are not talking about where parents choose to send their children, where their buses go. This is strictly about a political boundary for their legislative representatives, you, the members of the school board, and how you are elected. This is not geared towards students, is not based on student populations. This is strictly based on populations of the entire community as a whole, based on the 2020 census from birth to elder citizen.
Okay, so thank you, Ms. Eba, for that clarification. And that's an important one because we have heard a little bit of that in the community, that there is a level, some level of confusion. So with that, this is where we would like to spend the bulk of our conversation today with you. We obviously need to be able to provide some direction to Davis Demographics one way or another because there is the need for time. And so we're just going to start with the consensus and discussion. So let's take a look at, if we can, let's pull up map five, because that was the first option before you. And so this is the map that the county has decided to go with. So we'd like to entertain any discussion at this point, strengths and opportunities that you see, and just any comments you have relative to this with our goal of getting to the point today where we either say we're going to choose one of the county maps, we don't have to say which one today, just one of the county maps, or as a board, you would like to develop your own map. That's our outcome for today. But let's start with any conversation around map five pluses or minuses or any conversation. We'll turn it over to you at this point.
Okay. And before we get started with that, do you have the comments that we had from last time? Are those, are we able to put those on the screen? Because there were, there were comments.
Yes, we, the reason we didn't bring those forward, I'm just going to be very honest, is we felt some trepidation from some board members, like maybe we didn't have all the information we needed. We can talk with you a little bit about the larger pieces that we heard from you, but there were some comments offline, like I didn't feel like maybe I had enough information. I needed to be able to look at the street signs, you know, and all of that. So we really wanted to hear from you. With this one, you know, obviously Mrs. Eba just spoke very eloquently to that, that one of the larger concerns or questions around this one was the fact that District Four, you know, continued. It was the least change map, so it continued over the bridge. And so there were some comments around that as well, the geographic patterns and things like that. That's what I recall from some of the larger comments. So we wanted to hear, you know, like I said, from you today, now that you've had a chance to dive in, number of board members sat with us, were able to zoom in on street signs and really got a better sense about their comments at this point. That was some of the feedback we received.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to establish a few foundational things before we got started. So we're not going to be looking at what we said the last time, but we're. Okay. Now, you answered that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And for those of us who aren't, didn't listen this morning or read the information, was there unanimous approval, just out of curiosity?
Our understanding was three, two, but that it did pass as a, as a county map.
It was three, two? What, just out of curiosity?
For number five.
What was the split? Five was the decided on?
Five was the decided.
What was the runner-up?
Seven.
I believe it was seven.
Seven. And is that the NAACP?
That was the Commissioner Hammond's map.
I'm sorry?
Commissioner Hammond's map.
Hammond's map. Okay. All right. So I think that establishes a few foundational things. I want to start by making sure that each person here has an introductory remark. I think Ms. Morgan looked like she had some, some comments and you wanted us to focus on five?
Let's start with five, just to hear what you feel, pluses and deltas, and anything you would like to share with us about five. And then what we'd like to do is then go to one of the county options, just talk to us about the county options, and then talk to us about the desire or not to develop your own map.
Okay, so board members, let's stay with number five. Thank you.
So I really only have one comment. It's a question really for Board Member Fisher, and that is because I went to the DAC meeting. The feedback there was, the concern with this was splitting the Cape. And I, you know, since the DAC meeting, I don't know whether you've had more input from people in that area about the maps and their concern about their clout, as they would put it, being halved.
And Ms. Fisher, you're recognized to speak by the chair.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, so the population in the Cape has really exploded and we are at about 235,000-plus. So there's an expectation that the Cape would be split as it has been previous to this. And I think that our population also, our growth, has been primarily adults, not kids. And I thank Kathy for that explanation about this redistricting map being a, you know, a political thing. And I've heard comments from people who are politically active that the simple thing for people is to stay with the commission based on feedback from the elections office and from people who are politically astute. And the other thing is it does, it is compact boundaries. Most of the boundary does follow the geographical splits and the maintenance of neighborhoods is really accomplished that way, you know, with this particular split. So I don't think we could, since we have Sanibel and Fort Myers Beach, I don't think that we could.
Not split.
You know what I'm saying? As far as the population equity. So that, that's been the feedback that I've gotten, that, that's been the popular opinion.
I have no other comment. Oh, okay. Ms. Gittens?
My question that I had earlier was for Ms. Eba. You, you mentioned that, you know, it's not based on schools or anything, but the way I look at it, the county commission has a different kind of goal than we would have. And not that we're looking at schools, but wouldn't we also be looking at demographics in the? in those areas? If we, I don't know. I, I'm just saying, it just seems like we would at least take into consideration.
So the, the standard is one person, one vote, and Mr. Dupree Bruno, please chime in, in this answer. But the, the standard is one person, one vote, and the first, when, when demographers and planners and attorneys are looking at these redistricting, and, and once again, I reiterate that this isn't an effort that we are partaking in only here. All across the state, the country, local jurisdictions, state jurisdictions, and federal jurisdictions are partaking in a similar effort as we relook at the 2020 census data and how that affects the political boundaries of various elected officials, including yourselves. The first effort that we look at is strictly about numbers. This is, this is strictly on how many numbers, how many numbers of people, and this is total people, once again, not, you know, we, as a school district, we, we often focus on a subpopulation, which is the student population, which may not, or may be reflective of, of the whole. As Ms. Fisher mentioned, there's been quite a bit of growth in Cape Coral in the last 10 years. But we, what we saw and what we've presented to you in previous presentations is that the census data from the 20, the 2000s to the census data from the 210s saw a shift in population in Cape Coral, where in the 2000s, there was a significant increase in student age and young population. In the 2010s, we did not see that. We saw a stagnant growth there, but a significant growth in the elderly population. So, so this is, this is, this is about numbers. This is about people who live in the community from birth to death and providing for that one person, one vote, as your primary evaluation. And when we talk about compactness, we're talking, I, I use an analogy of a, of a ball. You can think of a tennis ball, you can think of a golf ball, you can think of a soccer ball. They're all different sized balls, but they're all connected at a core. They're all very compact to themselves. And so when we talk about compactness, it's not about size, it is about the contiguous of that area. So if you put a, a dot in the middle of a, of a district and you draw a circle around it, how connected is that area? How, how, how little of outliers are there? That's what you're evaluating, not based on the size of the compactness, just that there is compactness and there isn't a lot of outlier areas that go outside of that, that ball or that circle.
No, and I understand that. Thank you for that explanation. I, I understand that it's one person, one vote, but I'm also saying that if we're looking at an area like the Cape, I personally do not believe that the litmus test of being contiguous is carried out with number five. Contiguous discusses things like natural boundaries, roads, you know, mountains, natural configurations. And I don't think you can get any more natural configuration than a big river. And then the next part is community of interest. And the, when we think educationally, the interests of the communities in the Cape would be different than the interests of the individuals in Fort Myers, especially downtown. Because, just like yesterday, we had people here talking about the, the charter schools. And they are, you know, specifically, and more so, charters, and, and it's just a different, a different thought. If, like our discussion about giving some of the tax money, well, the section of Fort Myers really has nothing to do with that. I mean, they are not involved with the charter schools. They're, it's, there was also a community of interest talked about, uh, to ethnic, racial, economic groups. And I, I'm not even thinking racially, I'm just thinking contiguous, that contiguous is not seen by, by that particular map. And the people have different common interests as well. What I like about five is that for the most part, except for on the other side of the river, the natural contiguous boundaries have been done. And that for District Five, that would be 75 and 82, a natural contiguous boundary. I understand that. So I just, I do not understand going across the river to, from one economic, racial group, social group, to go across the other way. And I would think, if anything, if they took the line back across the river, and then on the west side of the Cape, just to add some in there, or add a little bit, if you're looking at what I'm talking about in the pink, to the west, and take that section on the west side of 75 out of District Five. But I don't know specifically if that would be enough of the numbers. But the Cape is, anyway, that's my suggestion.
I think, do you have an answer?
He said no.
He said what?
No, he said no, but that, we, we certainly can evaluate this. As much as this is a political decision, this is, this becomes your decision at this point, and we're looking, we're telling you all of these from a demography level work, but the political decision is what you bring to the table as you evaluate the criteria that Ms. Dupree Bruno established for you earlier. So we appreciate the level of response that you gave us as to where your concerns are with this, Ms. Gittens, because this is, if, if we were to make a different choice, this is the kind of information we'd need to know to look at. So thank you for that level of information.
And one last thing, in the, the yellow, the District Two, that empty area down there, within the next three to five years, there will be population there. So, and I, I brought this up to the, some of the county commissioners as well, on the odd years, they're, you know, able to make changes. And I see in the next three to six years, definitely, that 152, 137 is going to expand. And, you know, there's housing developments already on the books. So I, I know it's not based on future development, but we do know that, that that is coming. Anyway, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Did, did you have a question for Davis Demographics about?
Well, if, if they have the numbers to, to say, if you took that blue part that's on the other, the southern part of the river, and took it back, and then went from 75, took that piece away, and that other blue piece on the west of the Cape, would that be enough to get close enough to the 152 to work?
And Ms. Gittens, yes, thank you very much. And we, we are writing furiously as, as you all are speaking, so we will make sure we capture that. I don't know that we have an answer for that today unless, unless David wants to push on that, however, because that would certainly be work that would need to happen. I'm not sure he could give us the answer. David, am I correct?
Yeah. You know, my, it is, speaking of a few moments here, being personally, does this work? My company is working with about 50 school districts doing this exact process across the country. I can't, you know, know magically the number of people that live in each areas, but just keep in mind, at this point, for any of these scenarios you look at, any change has to have an equal and opposite change. So if you take one away, you have to add somewhere else. So please keep that in mind. These are not school boundaries where you can pick and choose where you want them to be. We have our limitations, we have to fill them based on an average. So even though you might look at these areas as being political and why is this grouping here, there are some limitations. The Area Five is limited to the north and the east because of your district boundary. So there's a natural error. You have the lower part of Lehigh, Eakers, 82, I think you said there. But then there's, has to be some wiggle room in all these areas. So you might not get exactly what you want and hope in these boundaries, because we still have to always go back to balancing it to about 152,000. So like I said, just be aware that you're not going to, no matter even if we do scenarios or you look at these seven, you're probably not going to find the perfect scenario, because as you make one change, you have to make an equal opposite change, and then now you are disrupting another area. So just always keep this in mind. There's always checks and balances to this process.
That's exactly why I said if you moved the bottom blue part and took that out of the Cape, would it be equal to moving District Four a little west and a little east to 75? That's my basic question.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. So still on this, on this map, Ms. Jordan, comments, questions?
Yes. I, I guess that when I'm looking at this, of course, I think I'm the one that's most affected of, of any of these maps. But when I look at this, I absolutely do understand what Ms. Fisher said. I totally agree with that as, as far as the growth that is taking place in the Cape area. And when they speak of water, many of these cross over the water. So do we look at that and say, we just get rid of the river completely? Because the, what is that? Five crosses over the river, one crosses over the, they all cross over the river somewhere. The majority of them do. So it's acceptable for some of them to cross over, but not others to cross over. And as far as the economics on one area, if you take the economics in, for some reason, people think that the west side of 41, everybody is like poverty stricken. That is not the case at all. But I, I hear that a lot, that there's, that they are concerned about that. But then when you take that and you go directly across the bridge into North Fort Myers area, there is, there's a lot of common factors there with, with the people on both sides of that river, and the economics for the families there, and the needs. So, and then you cross over, then you get a whole different, I mean, it's just a, it's a huge difference in every single aspect of that area. And that's what you're going to find in Lehigh. You're going to find certain areas of Lehigh that's going to have a certain group of people. You're going to go to another side, it's going to have better. It's going to be the same in the Benita. No matter where we go in this county, we're going to find those pockets that there's going to be great needs. So I, and speaking with the commissioners today, as well as hearing a lot of people, they do recognize the district with the, with the county commissioners. They associate us together. Even though we're not together, they associate that.
Okay. And actually, I want to clarify something. So Ms. Jordan, you said you're affected by some of these maps, and I'm, I'm going to make a guess that most, the five members that are single-member districts are, are concerned and not want to be displaced, so to speak. I think, are either of these maps going to displace the ones we're going to be talking about? Or any of them will displace and put two of our current incumbents in the same district?
So it's our, yes, our understanding, map three could have that potential, as well as, I believe, map seven. Correct me if I'm wrong.
And so map seven, which is.
There's actually three, there's three, three of the maps.
Is, is, are you displaced, or is it just the boundaries?
It would be, well, it would, actually, it would be members against members.
There are three ma, there are three maps of the seven that would cause member, current board members to have to be in the same district.
And which ones are they, because I think, is, am I wrong? Is this not a consideration for those of you in single-member districts that?
It is to me, because I feel like if we're talking about our, our districts, when we're speaking of districts, our districts are the district and the people that we have been representing.
All right. Ms. Dupree Bruno, go ahead.
So from a legal standpoint, it's not a predominant factor. You have to look at your numbers in equal distribution, equal population, that's what you're looking at. Now, if you want to look at current boundaries, you want to look at current, how it's situated, where members are, you can look at that. That's not, there's nothing that says you can't look at that, but it is not the predominant factor.
Yeah, but what I'm trying to establish is whether this is an important topic of conversation for some board members, because it would put two incumbents in.
You can't make a decision on the maps based on where incumbents are. So take a look at it, you can keep that in back of your mind, you can consider it, but you can't make a decision based on that.
I, I realize that, but I'm betting that the people that it affects will be voting a certain way, but I'm just going to move on from there.
Ms. Vaughn, if you want the answer to your question, it's maps three, six, and seven that would put two incumbents in the same.
Three, six, and seven.
And they're not always the same two incumbents.
Right. Okay. But it would, and I'm just trying to put some, some basic foundational things out there that may be things that, as all of you that are in single-member districts, want, want to consider.
And it's, it's our understanding, map five, the, the current map that we're on, does not, does not impact that. That's correct.
Okay. So, did you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Patrica.
I don't have anything on the individual maps. I'll save my comments for the consensus piece.
Okay. Ms. Arjevanelli.
My only concern has been the, the, and has been the concern for many years, and this is not, is, is what Ms. Gittens brought up, was the, the river division, you know, and, and, and I think it was a good point that Ms. Jordan brought up, the fact that it's okay to be divided in, in some areas, but not, and, but not in others. And I think we need to think about that. That was a really good point, because we want to not affect one area, but yet we've affected an area that a lot of people are concerned over, the, the division of the Cluj-Sachy for North Fort Myers and Central Fort Myers. So I think we really need to look, look at that area, which affects Ms. Jordan. So that's the comments I have.
Okay. Ms. Fisher?
No, I don't, I don't have any further comments right now.
Okay. To wrap it up on five, you have one other thing, Ms. Gittens?
Yes, just, just to Ms. Jordan's comment about, you know, in some places, the river is dividing. I can only speak for my district, because I've traveled it all. And one thing about that area where the river is, it's the same, you know, demographic. The, the people are the, the same, the economics are pretty much the same. And, and believe me, I'm not trying to go against anybody, but it's different for the section of Fort Myers and, and the Cape. And yet, that little blue area as well is changing as fast as we're sitting here, too. So we don't know in a few years how different that's going to look with the growth and everything of downtown Fort Myers and, and the corridor from, what's it called, Midtown for one, and the other one going down MLK from 75 to the downtown area. It's fast-changing. So, anyway.
Okay. Back, back to you guys.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate the input on map five. Just, we felt like we should start there, because that's where the, the county landed. So let's look at our other options. So the next conversation we want to have with you, and this is thinking about the collective maps. So we would be looking at maps one through five. We would like to hear from the board, would you like to come to consensus? And I'm going to marry two conversations right now. Do you want to come to consensus? Can you come to consensus on the use of one of the maps, maps one through seven? And then conversely, we will, the next conversation, which will lead together, will be, or would you prefer to create your own map? So right now, what we'd like to hear from you is, as a board, are you looking to go with one of the county maps, one through seven, or is it your preference to design, for the board to design their own map?
Okay. So the first thing you said was one through five.
First question is one through seven, excuse me.
One through seven.
One through seven.
Okay. So take, take a moment to think and.
And let me clarify. And let me clarify, if I may clarify, we're not asking you right now to pick Map Three, Map Four, Map Seven. That's not the question. The question right now is, as a board, are you giving us direction? Are you giving us consensus on going with one of the county maps, One through Seven? Doesn't matter to us at this point, One through Seven, or are you giving us direction to adopt one of your own and draw?
Okay, so before we do that consensus, Ms. Gittens had a question, and then I'll entertain any other questions.
Ms. Eva, on, or whomever is able to answer this, on Map Seven, what does that, that affects what, two members? And two, because how far over to the west does two go? Does that affect Ms. Giavennelli and that?
So Map Seven does put two board members, two incumbents who would have to be in the same district.
But does it, does it not put Ms. Giavennelli in, what is it, One, and Ms. Jordan in Two?
No, it puts, it puts both Ms. Giavennelli and Ms. Jordan in Two.
Okay. I just, I wasn't aware where those boundaries were, but thank you.
Okay, so, anybody else have a comment or question before we take consensus, whether we want to adopt not a specific map, but one of the seven? Yes, Mrs. Patrica.
Ms. Eva, I appreciate your trying to help us focus, the discussion and the thought process in terms of this being a political decision and one that's not about students. I do think there's some confusion in the community about that with talk about drawing different lines for the district and how that will impact students. And I did mention last night, I think, our opportunity to impact students when we're talking about achievement gaps wrapped around services, ELL students, ESE students, all of that is best addressed through policy, especially policy associated with our proximity plan. And I know that Mr. Edie is going to help me to understand that at some point in the near future, what those policies are and how we can make those best decisions. So this really, in my mind, is just about voting. I do have a question for Attorney Dupree Bruno. Since the lines we're looking at in Map Five are very similar to the lines that we've had over the past decade, those lines have not been successfully challenged as being unconstitutional on any basis. Can I take some comfort in that, knowing that the previous lines were not successfully challenged? And if we stick to something close to that going forward, then we would be within the bounds of the law?
So, I can't answer in terms of whether or not it was successfully or not successfully challenged, because I don't know the history of that. However, I do know that the county takes a look, and they had their law firm take a look to make sure that everything was balanced and that it did conform to the law. So I would anticipate that it would conform to the law.
Okay, all right. I just, I go back to voters and confusion and having different boundaries for a school board district versus a county commission district. And I don't, I think it creates confusion for voters. And voting is hard enough. Well, not that it's hard, but it can be confusing enough. So I would definitely lean in the direction of adopting one of the county maps. Specifically, today, if I had to make the decision, I would adopt the map that the county commission is adopting. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, but remember, we're just, right now, one of the county maps, one of the seven, not selecting. I think that'll be our next topic, depending on...
Ms. Vaughn, as part of your consensus building, since you are not allowed to speak to each other, except in a public forum such as this, it is helpful a little bit for us to understand which ones you're favoring, because that will help you all determine if there is consensus. Not necessarily for us, but for yourselves, since you aren't able to share information about this ahead of time.
Well, rest sure, Ms. Eva, that we will have that discussion. But thank you.
May I make one comment?
Yes.
Just on one of the statements Ms. Patrica made, that none of the previous maps have been challenged. And just for the record, for quite some time, there has been, as the report from NAACP yesterday, that they have challenged for quite a few years, the current map and the map that has been in place for a while. Maybe Mr. Edie, can you shed any light on the historical piece of that? I mean, if I may ask?
Yes.
From my knowledge, Ms. Gittens, going back to 2011, there were two diverging thought patterns as it related to the map, and this referencing the Fort Myers News Press article from September 7th. I'm sorry, that date was actually November 2nd of 2011. So there were some concerns at the time. This was alternative map option number nine, which is what the county adopted. There were members of the city council, as well as the mayor at the time, who did not support the map as where it currently looks. And there were some also diverging views who thought it was most important to keep the central part of Fort Myers together. So as far as challenges go, that would be the context from a historical vantage point. When these maps were adopted, very similar to the county commission vote from yesterday, it was a three to two vote, with two commissioners deciding not to go with option nine, and also some conversation from the city of Fort Myers and council folks who did not agree with option nine as it was presented in 2011.
Thank you. Okay, yes, Ms. Jordan, and then Mrs. Patrica.
I just wanted to follow up on that, because I was part of that with the NAACP and years ago. And that, the challenge was for the county commission map. And it had nothing to do with the school districts map, city maps. It had to do with the county commission maps. Ms. McMiller stated that. Mr. Brother Milwaukee had stated that as well, that this was pertaining to, the challenge was pertaining to the county commission map, not the school district maps. And he wanted to make that clear.
Okay, Mrs. Patrica.
When I said successfully challenged, I meant in court. Did somebody take this to court, and a court determined that those maps were drawn unconstitutionally?
Is that to me, Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, that's what, when I said successfully challenged, that was what I meant. I mean, anybody can challenge anything. But it's my understanding that the maps up to this point have been not successfully challenged in a court of law.
Okay, other comments, questions? Okay, I do have, I do have one thing. I've heard from, and this is something that came out of EDAC, that there are a few people, and this will really shake things up, but that there are some people that believe, now that there are seven school board members, that we should have seven single-member districts. History on that discussion, I'm sending it back to the panel, probably our historical person.
Yes, ma'am, I'll take part of it, and then I'll yield to the board's counsel for the other portion of it. 2014, the Ballot Language Amendment was presented to Lee County voters, and the proposition was very specific about increasing the number of board members in the seat. So from my layman's understanding, marrying the historical context and the legal perspective, I believe that change, going from an at-large system, two members, to, with the two members at large and the five single-member, require also, through the resolution, and the voters having to make that decision. But I'll yield to Ms. Bruno.
Absolutely correct, Mr. Edie. That's exactly, you are allowed to do that per statute. You can have seven at-large members, but it will have to go back to the voters.
Okay, so that's not something that could be done this cycle, but it's something that has been discussed. Now, I know we have a couple people who were on the board at that, at that time, as a matter of fact. I guess, Ms. Morgan, you were the first elected to, okay, District Seven.
At large, yeah.
Seven, at large. Is there anything, I just feel like it behooves us to at least touch on this, because I know it has been mentioned, mentioned in the community, and as I said, it was mentioned by a couple people at EDAC. So just looking ahead, what were the arguments that you remember? And anything, any light that you can shed? Because one of the things, and when I listened to Ms. McMiller, and I think Ms. Patrica picked up on this, and probably everybody did, that I felt that she was portraying that each person, you know, kind of left the two of us out that are elected at large. And although we tend to focus a little bit more on visiting the schools in your particular district, all of us represent all of the students from Alva down to Benita Springs. So I'm not sure what the advantage would be with seven single-member. Ms. Morgan, is there anything, any light that you can shed on the pluses and minuses for that?
And I know Ms. Fisher will weigh in if I misrepresent, but I think the goal was to establish seven seats, because of the size of the district. And then the discussion was whether we would go to seven single-member, seven whole, seven at-large, and hybrid. And the board crafted a resolution that was presented to the voters that asked for seven seats, five single-member, two at-large. And that's how the composition of this board changed.
Okay, and Ms. Fisher, did you have memories to add on that or comments?
Yes, so when I first got elected in 2010, it was at-large, and there were five at-large districts. And there is some information historically, that some people feel single-member districts don't make a lot of sense, because of the fact that we all are required to represent all of the students in all of the schools in our county. So for some convenience sake, I mean, you know, the single-member district was, let's make sure that this single, this district has adequate representation, and someone can focus on their own district. I mean, I would, I would weigh in and say that, based on my experience on both sides of the coin, I would say that seven at-large members would make sense to me in this particular case. And there is some research about Florida District School Board step backs that up.
Okay, Ms. Gittens, you have comments?
In a perfect world, you could have seven people that represent all children from shore to shore, coast to coast, line to line. And if everyone was elected at-large, in a perfect world, individuals that live in specific areas, that have specific information, knowledge, experience of those areas, would share it with the rest of the group. And as I mentioned in one of my other comments, the rest of the group would band together to take care of whatever needs are happening throughout that entire group. I think of the question, though, yes, we represent the whole group. But I think where EDAC and NAACP and some of the other groups that have spoken about this, when we talk about equity of being on this board, it would not have been as easy for me to run countywide. And just our demographics in Lee County, the whole, you know, kit and caboodle. So to me, the idea is to get the right people to the table that have enough knowledge about the different areas, that they can bring that to the table, and everybody work together, depending on where the need is. If we all need to go over here and focus on this today, fine. Or if we all need to go over here and help this person with this today, to me, that's the perfect world. It is not that, in my mind, being elected as single-member district means that that's all you're just going to focus on. But that's why I said in a perfect world, because everyone would have the same idea that we are sharing concerns, we are sharing accomplishments, and we are sharing the whole thing. So I don't know that we're there. So to me, I understand having to run countywide, and looking at the demographics of Lee County, it would be pretty tough to keep a balance.
May I please call point of order? The seven single-member districts is not on the agenda. It's not on anything. I mean, if that's something we want to pursue as a board, we can put that in the parking lot for a workshop. But that's not what staff has asked us to reach consensus on today, and it's really beyond the bounds of today's conversation.
Okay, well, point of order, the topic came up, and I gave my response like everyone else.
We're not going to debate, and I'm just going to say that I chose to bring it up, even if it's slightly out of the realm of exactly what we're looking at, because I'm trying to be responsive to the community, and I wanted to make a point about, you know, because there are some people that still, when they're talking about the maps, there are still some people that don't realize the time sensitive, sensitivity of all of this. And, you know, it's, I think maybe there's a perception that this is somewhat easier than it is. And I feel like there is still some appetite in the community to not go with one of these maps, because this is part of our agenda, Ms. Patrica, the maps. And we are talking about whether to go with one of these maps or one of our own. And to be responsive, as the liaison from EDAC, I wanted to put it out there, the options, and then also put it out there that if we were to choose, if this board had an appetite to go for seven districts, that we could not do it in this election cycle, because there are other things. So I feel this is very relevant to the topic of, are we going to vote on one of these maps? Are we going to look at something else? And I think the public needs to have this information. So, Ms. Morgan, you had a comment?
Well, my comment was, we needed to get back on track, because we only have 90 minutes for this. And any change in districting with respect to the board, single-member at-large, has to go for a referendum. So that's not a topic of conversation today. My preference at this point is to utilize one of the county maps, with the reservation that I am disappointed that they didn't do a better job of trying to solve the problem of Fort Myers.
Okay, and I'm going to come back to, we are on track, and I will keep the meeting on track as best I can. And is, are there any other comments about any of these maps which would make you vote no to, to one of the ones that already exist, one of the seven? Yes?
My generic question, then, is, when is it appropriate to talk about making a change, making a major change in what we do? When is it appropriate? After we make a discussion and a decision on a map, then you're going to say, oh, we've already made a decision? I really don't understand why the conversation does not include, we have basically three choices, accepting the map that the county commission has, drawing our own, or, and changing what we do through a referendum. It is something that can be on the table. It is not something that is so far out that it should not be discussed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gittens. I agree, and that's why I brought it up. And I think part of the reason for these meetings, as well as doing our own business, is to be responsive to information that has been brought up out in the community. And again, I wanted to make sure that we touched that base while we were on this topic of consensus of one of these maps or one of our own maps. Yes?
Can we agree to put this on a workshop topic as a resolution to be discussed in the future, so that we can...
the future, so that we can get back to the map, please? That's really, I mean, it's a referendum. We can't discuss a referendum here. We've got to agree that we're going to discuss it, and if we're going to discuss, or if we're going to do that, we have to put it on the workshop list.
And thank you, Ms. Morgan. I totally understand that. Again, I'm just putting out one more option, and for everybody's edification, are there no more comments? And I gave my comments on this. We will go ahead at this point and do our consensus. The consensus will be yes, if you are for going with one of the seven maps, and obviously no if you're not. So we'll start with Ms. Morgan.
I am for one of the county maps.
Okay. I am for one of the county maps. Ms. Gittens?
It's a consensus. I can live with one of the county maps.
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, please.
Okay. Ms. Jevon?
So it's difficult for me to make a decision without knowing what it would look like to have, if we drew our own. So it's hard for me to make that decision, because we're completely ruling out what another option would be, because we have no idea what that would be, right? So how does that work?
Well, the only problem is, we're under the time restraints, and if we were to do that, we would have to let Davis Demographics know today, right now. So if I could please have your vote.
I would be more curious to see what Davis Demographics came up, comes up with, because I don't feel that we're listening to the community.
Okay. So that would be a no, or live with, or no. Okay. And Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I'm for one of the county maps.
And can I change my turn? No.
Okay. Well, all right. So we have five yes, one of the county maps, two no. So there you go.
Okay. So just clarity from the board, what we're looking for, maybe Mr. Dupree Bruno or Ms. Vaughn can help us. So when we take consensus, just to clarify, we're looking for a thumbs up, thumbs to the side, or thumbs down. Is that correct?
All right.
So you have five thumbs up and two no's.
Two cannot live with it.
Two no's.
No, two no's.
And then five.
Yeah, I just took a voice vote.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we were clear.
I did a voice vote instead of the thumbs up-down.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So back to the panel.
At this point, where we're at with this is, we have gotten, you know, basically, and we want to clarify, if there's any other questions you have, for those that voted no, if there's anything else that you need from us, we're here to answer those questions. But basically, what we needed to know today is, the direction of the board was to either go with the county maps, one of them, or to create our own. And what we're hearing is, the majority of the board is giving direction. We're just clarifying a staff. Majority of the board is giving us direction to go with one of the county maps. So at this point, unless I'm correct, unless I'm incorrect, we are going to return to you to have a conversation on the 16th, which then we will go, and we will eliminate maps. We will start with map number one, and we will say consensus or no, and then we will proceed to each one of those maps and have that conversation on the 16th. So unless that, I've heard differently, that's what we're taking away.
You are correct.
I appreciate that.
Yes, you are.
So those are our next steps. We will be back on the 16th to have that conversation. And again, if there are questions offline or online, we are available to you.
Ms. Vaughn, I believe Ms. Fisher has a question.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. I just have one residual question. Has there been any official statement or any serious discussion with our voters' registration office?
So Dr. Savage and I were originally part of a meeting with the county, as well as a variety of local officials and supervisor of elections. You know, obviously, the idea behind that is, the less confusion we create, the better. But the municipalities and all the powers that be truly understand, we have the ability as a board to either go with our county, or to one of the maps, or to draw our own. They have been very clear all along that you do have the authority to do what you so choose. Would it make it easier? I think just absolutely, I think, for the voters. I think that is the opinion. However, that does not usurp your ability to create your own map if you so choose.
So then, was there any discussion or opinion about whether, or how the impact would be if the school district drew its own map and had seven voter districts? You know what I'm saying? And how that would impact precincts and things like that?
I'm going to ask the superintendent to weigh in if he would.
Yes. I mean, obviously, if we were to go in a different direction, that absolutely could impact everyone in terms of the voter side of it, just in terms of there's deadlines, that just getting these things done by, you know, the December timeframe has an impact if there were any issues of our own maps, different. I mean, there's a number of pieces. Now, they didn't get too deep in the weeds on it, but they wanted to make sure we were aware that it wouldn't just impact us, it would impact everyone in some way. And so they just wanted to make sure there was awareness, so that if there was a desire for this board to go in a very different direction, that they would want to be aware of that, so that they could be aware of how that could impact their timelines. And certainly, we could get them to give more robust information on that, if that appears to be the direction that this board would want to go. But it was definitely an impact on everyone if we were to choose something else. It would not just impact us only.
Exactly.
Okay, Ms. Ant?
Okay. Any additional questions or anything you need from us at this point?
I just have one more thing. I would just ask for Ms. Ebor to repeat her clarification about the purpose of the redistricting.
So the purpose of redistricting for legislative boundaries is that we are looking at the 2020 census data for all population of all people, from birth through senior, to understand what our current population of the county is, and a proportion each of your districts to as close to equal as possible. We look for about a 2.5% variant or less. And the number that we're looking at, based on our current population of this year, for the 2020 census, is about 152,000 people. David might have the exact number, but it's around 152,000. And this is an effort that not, is not just something that Lee County School District is doing. This is an effort that is being done across the country by every local, state, and federal jurisdiction that has multiple jurisdictions within it. So basically, the president is the only elected office that is exempt from this effort, as that is the one seat that seats all citizens of the United States. But every other, every other jurisdiction, and the two senators, right, because they are statewide jurisdiction. But everyone else is going through this effort right now. It is a political decision. It is not a school district decision. This is not, in fact, where your student goes to school. This does not affect where the transportation is. This is strictly a decision of political boundaries for who their elected representatives are. Is that what you were looking for?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for your information, your hard work on this. Before we move on to the next step, there was a request that we place for future reference, something on our list, so I'm just going to, I don't know if you, you're usually pretty good about writing those things down, but for future discussion, the idea that we might want to entertain those seven single-member districts, and I think this would be something that, there'd be a lot of community weigh-in on that, from what I've heard. So thank you very much. So, Mrs. Dupree Bruno, would you please read the information on public comment?
Yes, ma'am. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket provided at the back. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers may not address board members by name and personal attacks against individual board members, the board as a whole, the superintendent, or district staff are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. There will be one warning and we ask that you govern yourself accordingly. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time for speaker is three minutes. You'll find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. You should address the board as a whole versus individual board members as they act as a collective board. And when you're ready, let him chair.
We're ready. Do you have two cards?
Cards, so Ms. Nystrom and Ms. Jenner.
So let's say that Board Member Five makes a motion to choose map one, and Board Member Two makes a motion, seconds that motion, and then the board supports it in a five-two vote. And they say to the attorney, okay, send that information to the supervisor of elections. And then at the following board meeting, they find out that the attorney hasn't sent that information to the board of elections. And the board decides that they're going to make a different motion to approve a different map, and it gets approved. Is that correct, according to parliamentary procedure? Because I thought if there was already a motion on the floor from the meeting prior, that the only person that could rescind that motion would be the person that made it in the first place. So can you clarify that, please? Ms. Jenner, because of the conflicting meeting times between this meeting last night and the one at the B O C C, I think I was the only one in the room that was actually physically at the B O C C meeting last night. So let me specify something. There was a five-member panel that voted three in favor of map five, and two did not vote in favor of map five, but one clarified that map five was a second choice. There were a lot of people in that room last night, and they did speak on issues of equity and diversity. They spoke on contiguity and a variety of other issues that are pertinent to the statute and to the Constitution to determine the breakdown of lines of county maps, based on everything from number of individuals in each of the counties, the footprint size of the counties, contiguity, and so forth. And there were questions raised as to whether or not map five was not inherently racist, based on the fact that it was created back in 2011. And some people even went so far as to say that it was gerrymandering. But there were also letters that were presented by Commissioner Pendrass and Sav, I think it was Savatini or Ruane, that indicated that at the time, the NAACP did not have any problems whatsoever, and in fact, were in support of what was then known as map number nine and became the current map. And so that argument is basically just fallacious and trying to engender division. So personally, I would recommend highly that you pick map number five. It keeps things the way that they have been as close as possible. It evenly distributes the numbers. It allows for continuity of representation and involvement and knowledge base of the board members. When it comes to this discussion that you've had today about whether or not we should go to single district, seven people, things of that particular nature, I'd like to actually note that five members on the county commissioner have to reside in their individual districts, but they're voted for at-large, and they're way more functional than this group on any given day. And the only reason we have seven board members right now here, in my understanding and based on my vote, was I added in the two extra at-large members, because I didn't like only having a say on one out of five, and I sure as heck don't want my vote and my ability to be able to control those people on the board dropped down to one out of seven. So I think that really is a bad idea. If anything else, go back to five members on the board and make them required to live in their individual districts, but make them all at-large. It actually created a significant difference. And by the way, I wasn't frisked or treated like a criminal going into the B O C C meeting.
Concludes public comment.
Okay. And thank you, ladies, for speaking up on this issue. As you know, there's going to be a lot more discussion with our actual selection of one of those seven maps. Mr. Dupree Bruno, I have a question about whether you intended for us to go ahead with what you had originally planned for yesterday? You had originally planned yesterday, if there was time in the briefing, for a couple presentations from individual members? Is that something that you want?
I didn't plan that for today, if the board wants to move.
No, you planned it for yesterday.
Yes. But if the board, it's up to you, it's your good of the order, if the board wants to do that, I have no say. It's up to the board.
Okay. I know I was one of the ones that prepared, but it's, I don't have a problem not presenting. Who was, who else was prepared? Are you prepared to do it today? All right. So let's, since we do have some time with this meeting, let's just see what the board would like to do with that. Okay, Mrs. Patrica?
I just want to let everyone know, I have a three o'clock hard stop. I have to travel out of town, and I just want to let you all know, when I get up and leave, I'm not being rude. I have family obligations.
What is the, and Mrs. Dupree Bruno, if we don't do it today, would then it go to the training? Or how did you envision that, since at least a couple of us put in some time to prepare?
I think if during your board member comments, if you want to move forward with your presentation, you can do that. It won't be going to the training next week.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Gittens?
Can we do board member comments? And then, if we have time, those that want to participate, do that, please.
However, at the pleasure of the board.
Well, I'd like to suggest that we do board member comments while everyone is here, and then we can move on to that, you know, if everyone agrees to do that.
Okay. Ms. George, how long is that? How long would you both need? I mean, if it's something that's going to take 30 minutes, then, because we're supposed to be here till, what, three anyway?
Four.
Four. These are three hours. I can do mine in this.
Well, because this was 90 minutes, so that's why I was asking.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Fisher.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that, I think I heard Attorney Dupree Bruno say that you could do it during your board member comments. And I think, since you're prepared and we need to hear it, I would say, let's go ahead with it.
Okay. How about this? Board thumbs up or thumbs down that the two of us that have a presentation, and with the promise that we're not going to go for 30 minutes, that maybe we can probably do it within 15 minutes or so? How many of you feel that we should go ahead and the two of us do our presentations during our board comments?
As long as it's after board comments, please.
No, during, what we're taking a consensus on is during board comments, since we are...
My issue is that there are some comments I would like to discuss. I'm sorry. I'm sorry I'm boring you all, but there are some comments I need to make, and everyone needs to be here. Ms. Patrica's leaving at three, and I think that she should be here for my comments.
Well, then, I'll call on you first for your comments. How's that?
That's fine.
All right. So board, during board comments, do the presentation sideways or thumbs down. I can't, Ms. Patrica, I can't.
She already said yes.
So we're going to do it during board member comments, and we're going to call, I'm going to call on Ms. Gittens. to call on Ms. Gittens first, since she wants to be sure everybody's here.
Thank you. I first have a question for the superintendent, and my question is, did you direct staff to do a press release for Ms. Patrica's personal statement that was delivered last night?
No, I did not. I provided no direction to staff, and I just, I know that's the question. I also saw I had a couple of emails that came in from other board members that seemed to imply that maybe staff was involved in drafting something that Ms. Patrica read last night. We had no, to my knowledge, no staff, no staff involvement, certainly no direction by me to be involved in any way with, with individual board members' comments or anything along those lines.
Okay, well, as to what I'm talking, talking about, our meeting ended at 9:45 and at 9:59. Mr. Spitzer sent a notification to news media about her comments, including where they could find it on YouTube. So that is a concern to me. And first, it's a concern because I first need to apologize that I did not stop the conversation and at least call for point of order. We are not here and don't have the opportunity to, I don't know how to put it, but to talk about community members. You know, to me, that was a personal issue, and it was not a generic issue that involved all of us, and yet now, because it was done on this day, as we all are possibly involved. Some of the verbiage, some of the things that were said, and then, five minutes after the meeting is over, it's sent to the media, and I don't know who authorized that, but if it's a situation that Ms. Patrica did, then to me, we add that to overstepping your position. And it would, to me, that was, it was an embarrassment part of it. I understand your feelings and all that you've been going through, but let me say this too, and I'll say it in the training, I guess, but I understand being put down and belittled in the public and accused and all that. I totally understand that. But when it did happen to me, I did not use the, the board as a, an opportunity to straighten it out. I think that we should have called for point of order because it is, some of the verbiage was not things that we allow the public to say in a meeting. And this is just me personally speaking, and I, I totally disagreed with it. And as far as putting it on the record, I had nothing to do with that statement, and I wasn't aware of it, and I don't think that it should have gone out from staff as if it were something from the, from the board. Yes, I'm sorry.
Well, on that note, if I may clarify, I just want to make sure we're clear. So, you and I received these emails, and had heard that there was concern about staff involvement, as far as staff sending out. You know, I inquired with communications staff what exactly happened, because Board Attorney Dupree Bruno and I were copied on this, on this direct communication to our communications staff. And for me, the concern is always about what's the process? What is the process for this piece? And so the way that the email was framed was that board members, on a monthly basis, have editorial comments that they are permissible to do. I looked in the board protocol manual, could not find that, but I've read these editorials in the past. So I think, just in fairness to our staff, from a process standpoint, as a board, you know, we really would want your direction as a board, you know, so that we don't have situations where staff are put in a position where they are receiving what appears to be direction that is, and I inquired, is this consistent with past practice? That's what I would really rely upon your guidance.
May I, if I may answer that? We all do have an opportunity to write a message every month, and Ms. Patrica's was supposed to have been October. Her due date for it was October the 2nd. And the, the article for this month was supposed to be Ms. Jordan, and it was due, I think, on the 2nd or whatever, but it was not. If that was the case, and that's what was said, and besides that, the statements that are done for our board messages are no more than six, than 600 words, because they are also put in the news press.
If there's one more outburst, Ms. Jenner, this is, this is your first warning, please. There's one more, Arbus, Mr. Parfitt.
Well, I find it interesting everyone's leaving, so I guess there's no appetite to make sure that we are all doing what we're supposed to do.
I think this is an important topic, and I'm going to open it up for discussion, but before I do, I'm going to just say, Dr. Savage, I know you haven't been in this position for a long time, and you can't possibly know all of the processes, but that is absolutely not the process. The process is that, and we have it right here, these are board editorials that then appear on our own page. If you look at the bios, anybody who doesn't remember this, or Dr. Savage, you look at the bios, and, and the editorials, the opt-ed pieces that we do are not scathing remarks and, and personal comments. They are things like, when I did mine last year, at the end of the year, I wrote about what we were doing as a district to help reading, and especially, I focused on young children and the programs we were going to have over the summer. I do not recall any opt-ed that was officially from this board that was negative, and it's something that in the past, it was Irma Lancaster that contacted us and reminded us and gave us the, this is the number of words, and I'm, I'm not sure where you got that information, but it is totally, absolutely incorrect. And personally, I find that the fact right now that two board members have chosen to walk out, this points to the uselessness of us having any kind of training and pointing to whose fault is all of this. And I know I'm off-base, but I don't care. I'm just going to say it. There are people on this board that with the attitude that if they're hearing something from Mrs. Gittens, or from me, or from Mrs. Giovannelli, and they don't like it, well, let's just walk out, because this, again, Dr. Savage, I'm sorry that you got wrong information, but it's totally, absolutely not what we have done in the past. And it does not come out through Rob Spicker. I don't know who does it now. In the past, it was.
Lancaster.
It was Ms. Lancaster. I don't know if Ms. Stillwell is doing it.
I just did it last month, and Ms. Lancaster is who did mine.
All right. So what you thought is so totally wrong.
Well, if I may, I believe this was sent to Ms. Lancaster, so my presumption, if Mr. Spicker's involved, that Ms. Lancaster may have assigned it to him as part of her regular communications staff. I think for me, what I would ask from a clarity standpoint, because the last thing, here's the number one thing, I am, in my role, my job is not in any way to evaluate the content of what any one individual board member says. That is your responsibility as individual board members to speak. You're elected officials, you're empowered to use your voice in the way you see fit. We, as a district apparatus, are here to support that leadership when it's, it walks a little bit of a funny line when it's an individual member. So, you know, certainly if there is an opportunity where we support editorial comments and whatever way we do that, I would just ask for very clear direction so that I can give that clear feedback to our communications staff, because I have no reason to believe that our communications staff would in any way want to go against the vision that I have, that all board members are equal, you are all empowered in the same way, we want to treat you all equally, we want you to have the same access, the same rights, the same privileges. That's our job, is to ensure that you are getting that fair use as a group. In order for me to do that, I would really want very clear direction from the board, whether through the protocol, through the work that we do, to ensure that happens, because I don't want staff in any way being viewed that somehow they are aligning with individual board members. That's just not at all, that sends a very bad precedent in our district for staff to get that type of lack of clarity. And so I can tell you from the communication that I received, essentially it was that, you know, this is this editorial piece, it was sent to Ms. Lancaster, we were copied on that piece. Certainly, I gave no direction to do anything with it, but it appeared very procedural in terms of the guidance. There was an attachment that had the actual remarks, they appeared to be the remarks that Ms. Patrica read last night at that meeting. If that is not at all within the bounds of what you all expect as a board, please let us know that so that we have that clarity on our side. And I would ask that you, as a board, help clarify that for us.
Well, I'm, I'm going to give it back to Ms. Gittens, but I'm just going to say, how about when it's my turn, I have a rant on, oh, we have, she's crazy, we have a lady out there, blonde, straight-haired lady, and what a pain that woman is, and she's always here, and she's, I mean, is that the kind of stuff we want to put out as our opt-ed from the district? Staff knows what the guidelines are, and this is totally, we have never put out a vindictive vicious piece like that. Is that what we really want to do? And I believe staff knows better, and I'm going to shut up. I'm way out of line, I'm way out of order, I'm giving it back to Ms. Gittens.
And I wasn't, you know, trying to cause an issue. I'm just trying to find, where's the equity in this board? Where is the, you know, what's good for one is good for the other. Where, where is that? And I, it's interesting to me, as we do the, you know, the, can we get along, and we're told how it looks to the public and, and all of that. I just, I don't see the equity in it. I don't see that faking it until you make it, until the public believes that we all get along. It's just, it's not within me to do that, and I'm not trying to cause anger and, and, you know, confrontation, but I just think we need to do the right thing, and everybody needs to do the right thing and the same thing. And I hear you guys sighing and, you know, sucking your teeth when I'm speaking. It's okay, I'm still going to say the right thing must be done. Okay, Ms. Ms. Fisher, please don't say it's not about me.
All right, so. Said it's not all about you.
I, I know, it's the same thing, and that's the same thing you say each and every time, but you don't hear the sighs and the sucking your teeth. I'm not saying it's about me. If all of us should have the opportunity then to do an out there, and if we want something out there, we could call communications and say, put this out there for us. So my question is, is that equitable? If that's what we're going to do as a board, we need to make that decision.
Okay, let's, did you have any other remarks at this?
No, I think I'm fine.
Okay, so I'm going to go down the line, going to call on Ms. Jordan, and then Ms. Morgan after Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. I was just going to say, I've not seen the opt-ed that you're referring to, so I don't know who received that email, so I've, I've not seen that.
Email to us.
It was emailed to us. Well, I think some, sometimes certain board members get emails that all of us do not get, because I did not see that. Second, I'm just going to say, yeah, I don't know if that should have gone out, I'm not going to even comment on that, but I do know that I have seen multiple times when Mr. Spicker picks up from whatever we're doing out in the county, and I have seen that come out to us on like our reports. So whether I'm saying something, or Ms. Vaughn's saying something, Ms. Gittens saying, Ms. Giovannelli, that comes out, and we see that because it comes out on that list that he sends to us with everybody's information, so, and that keeps us informed of what's being said. I have seen that.
It's not the same.
So I'm not sure, as I said, I've not received that, so I don't know.
Okay, Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so I'm sympathetic to Dr. Savage's plate here and the plate of staff. I think, okay, something has happened, and we don't, we don't believe that that should have happened, but we didn't create guardrails for it, and our job is to create those guardrails. So again, I would say that, does this belong in the workshop? Does somebody want to draft a policy or an amendment to policy that would clarify this for future correspondence? I mean, I think it's fair to say that we probably do need a policy with respect to what it is that board members disseminate using whatever. So let's just table this and agree that we're going to move it forward.
Okay, Ms. Fisher, you had a comment?
My comment is that we do have policies and we do have protocols, and that we each have a responsibility to be a member of this team. We are devoid in accomplishing a lot of our required responsibilities, and we have, I think we had a protocol about board member comments and having a limited time. And we do have some board members who take excessive time with their comments, and a lot of them are very personal, and I, I think we need to revisit that and look at it in our training. Now, I mean, unless we're all on board, I think you're right, Ms. Vaughn, we're wasting our time doing the training, because I think we have, some, some of us are just not willing to compromise. The governor responded about Ms. Patrica and said that there were no ethics violations and there were no laws broken, and it is not his job to sanction elected officials.
I don't believe that.
That is not true.
And let's, let's, let's go back.
Point of order, that is not true.
Let's, let's go back to the topic at hand. And the topic at hand is how this rant of vitriol was put out by our school district to represent us as a district when.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
No, I'm, I'm the Madam Chair.
May I finish my comment?
You can finish when I, I tell you, you can finish. I want you to stay on point, Ms. Fisher. We're not talking, we are talking, all right, adios.
I have stuff to say.
Go ahead.
So, when I, when I had to defend in my own ethics complaint, which was from an outside individual that a board member worked with, and she admitted to that, I held my, I held my, a press release outside, and I did not bring it into the dais, and so I want to be real crystal clear on that. And second of all, Dr. Savage, this was, this was sent out last night, it was not her month. This is being scrutinized, embellished as always about something that's not the facts. The facts was, something was sent from, from your staff in the middle of the night, and you're telling me, I, my concern is, we have staff working in the middle of the night helping a, a board member, and giving, and a board member's giving direction in the middle of the night, in using our letterhead. If this is going to come out as an, as a newsletter, because that's what we do, is a newsletter, that was not a newsletter that was read last night. So I am very concerned, because now, we're just being very laxadaisical on what is happening, and we've got special treatment from, from staff for different board members, and I have a big problem with that. I would never try to step out of my lane. That is stepping out of the lane. That's directing staff to do something in the middle of the night using our letterhead, our emails, not his personal. not his personal. He can be her, he can be her campaign manager, or whatever he wants to be, or his, her communication manager, whatnot, and he can do it on his own time, but not on the taxpayers' time. And that's the problem I have. So that's what, it violated our own policy because we are not supposed to be directing staff to do any damn thing.
Can people need to respond?
Dr. Savage.
Just because, imputing one of our staff members, I just have to say, you know, I'm not here to say that Mr. Spiker acted at, you know, that he was volunteering or anything. Remember, Mr. Spiker is a member of our communications staff. If he is receiving what he believes, and I have not spoken to Mr. Spiker, so I'm happy to do that, if he is receiving what appears to be procedural direction that is consistent with what he's been asked to do by his supervisor, he's not doing this because he works for an individual board member or anything along those lines. Now, I can't say one way or the other, but I would ask, from as a professional courtesy, for the opportunity to trace those steps, I've, I've had the email sent to me to find out what exactly, how this was carried out, and it does appear to be done very procedurally, where it appeared to reference that this is an editorial procedural type of piece. Now, what I'm hearing from board members is, that's not consistent with, again, last, it was shortly after, it was around 9:30 or something.
It was five minutes after the meeting was over.
And we were copied, so we weren't directed in any way, it was directed to Ms. Lancaster, who is the head of our communications. When I asked for clarity about the process from staff, they said, well, this is what has been done in the past, that board members know that they communicate directly with communications, and communications offers to assist them if they need help in crafting and things along those lines for editorial comments. Now, I understand there's some discrepancy in perception from the various individual members, but again, that's why what I've asked for from the board is clarity, because when I go to the procedural, the protocol manual, there's 81 pages, none of them address this. So for a superintendent coming in, I have no way of checking what your past practice is in this, I've asked for them to send me information so that I can follow up directly and say, okay, if this is what was sent to you, who authorized this? Because I certainly did not. And so, so why was it done? Well, if they're following in what they believe is consistent past practice, it is in no way nefarious, it's in no way alignment of individual board members, that's, I just don't want it being characterized that way in our, in our meeting, and then staff is feeling like they're caught in the middle. And that's very important to clarify that. I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm saying staff shouldn't be caught in the middle of a situation like this because we work at the pleasure of the board, we are trying to honor what the board asks us to do.
Please make a statement.
Well, no, I need to finish, I'm sorry, I need to finish. Because he's getting, still getting wrong information.
And so, yes.
You can't tell me that Ms. Patrica, her deadline was October 5th, and you can't tell me that she was a month late in giving her, her newsletter information. I'm sorry, I don't agree with the information you received.
And also, the letter, the information, this is factual, the information goes to our secretaries and to Ms. Lancaster, it never goes to communication. Our secretaries are the ones that maintain the list of who does what, when and where. And between the secretaries and Ms. Lancaster, if you miss your date, that's who you get an email from saying, you're late, a reminder you need to do this. There is never anything else.
Okay.
November 2nd was Ms. Jordan's date and deadline.
I turned mine in.
So, so then that is not going to be posted, Ms. Jordan's newsletter is going to be in November, which was now, not in October.
All right. I'm just going to say, calling into this, this has devolved into something where we each as individuals, I've already requested via one of the executive assistants, a meeting with Dr. Savage, this is something that we need to resolve one-on-one, and I don't think the mood is for our, our training presentations right now.
I think we lost that.
I think we've kind of lost that mood, especially since the people that need to hear it the most aren't here.
That leads me to...
Did I say that? Ms. Dupree Bruno, do you have anything you want to add? Because I'm going to adjourn after you and Dr. Savage. I think we've devolved and we need to call into this.
The only thing that I wanted to clarify, because I did hear this in public comment, is with regards to the letter to the governor. So here is the issue. The board voted to draft a letter based on a motion. A letter was drafted based on that motion. What the public does not know is that emails were sent requesting different things from board members. As a result of those emails, a draft was sent to the board with an explanation that pursuant to Florida Bar Rule 4.17 regarding conflicts of interest, the letter that I drafted, I was comfortable with. If there was additional things that the board wanted to put in that letter, they needed to get a conflict counsel, because the bar rule says the representation of one client will be directly adverse to another client and need to get a conflict counsel. And that is why it was brought to the board. Second, there is an issue with regards to constituents in an organization. The Florida Bar Rule says, if there is a situation that involves a board of directors as the attorney, you ask for a separate legal opinion on the matter to be sought. And that is exactly what was requested. That's, and that's why it came yesterday, the board had a discussion about it, and then I wanted to make sure that I had clarity from my bosses whether or not they wanted me to move forward with the letter, so I requested a formal action vote. The board could have decided to do whatever they wanted to do, they could have decided to get an outside counsel to maybe, they could have done whatever they wanted to do. But for me, I just wanted to get clarity from the board as to what they wanted me to do. And struck, and again, you don't know about the other things that are happening behind the scenes.
But, and all due respect, Ms. Bruno, you should have told us that, that night, you did not say a word that night, and that is where I'm having the big problem, because we should have been told, we need a conflict resolution attorney, and because, I mean, if you're not able to fulfill your duties, we have to know this.
So it's not a question of not being able to fulfill duties. The question was, draft a letter that reflected the motion, and that was drafted, and it was sent to the board, and I also said to the board with two emails, one, this is as far as I can go with this letter, if you want something more, you're going to have to get a conflict counsel, and then I sent another email, here is why I can't do it is pursuant to this bar rule.
And that was yesterday, though.
But we don't, you don't meet until every two weeks is when you have a meeting.
But you did it via email, you didn't tell us even.
But I sent an email, two emails.
Can I verify?
Yesterday.
May I please verify what happened?
Yeah, let's...
Okay, I, I, the day after the motion, I did copy everyone on the email, I had a concern about just that, I did not realize there was a statute that covered it, but considering the tone and things that have happened in the past, I was concerned about our attorney who reports to all of us writing that letter, and I stated so in an email, and I suggested, and, and here's one other thing, when I made that consensus, all of you just ignored when I said I would like to work with. It's on the video, when it was repeated by the attorney and repeated by Ms. Jordan, and I kept saying, I would like to work with, and it was ignored. I watched it again this morning, and you can see that. But I did send an email the next day out of concern for our employee and any possible retaliation or feeling that, you know, she had to talk about one of us, and I suggested Mr. Quick, who has always been working with us prior to our current attorney, to assist. And I don't know where it got so derailed last night, but the bottom line I want to say is, a motion was made and passed by a majority of the board on October 19th, and whatever happened last night does not touch what has already been voted on, and I have heard many times from many of you, once the board votes on it, it is a, a majority of the board makes it a majority board thing. It is policy, and you can't opt out. You have to, the board has decided. How many times do, you know, do we lose a vote? But that's what goes on.
So just for clarification, and Ms. Gittens is absolutely correct, she sent that email and with those concerns, and I immediately responded to that email and advised that this would have to go back to the board to determine if they want to use an outside counsel, because this is the board's decision as to whether or not they want to use an outside counsel. So that was sent immediately afterwards, after receiving Ms. Gittens' email.
That's right.
And then there were two other emails that, that came out afterwards, basically talking about the potential conflict, and this is, this was my concern, so.
It's just very difficult, because you're our employee, that we are really relying on your guidance, you know, and it's, even with the, the decision being made last night should have been really...
Okay, Ms. Jordan, go ahead.
I just want to make a comment, I'm sitting here listening to the way that we, we keep speaking about our employees, but yet the way that we are speaking to them with the disrespect, I mean, this all, if there was issues with, and I just, I found that, that's something that has been addressed, sent to Dr. Savage to respond back to us regarding that. And I think that...
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
We should have given, I'm sorry, Ms. Gittens, but I am speaking at this moment.
No, I'm not understanding what you're saying.
Okay, what I'm saying is that we, we speak about people being rude, coming this way, and then we want to make sure that everybody has civil discourse and everybody's speaking the way that they should, however, when we're sitting up here, we're yelling, like literally, I'm sorry, it, to me, it's like really being disrespectful to both of them, the way that we're speaking to them, and demanding on what this, this, well, he has to have an opportunity to even find out what it is, he's going to look into it, he's been asked to do so by, it looks like multiple people, so give him an opportunity to research, find out what actually took place, and then come back to us as we have asked him to do. Instead of bringing it up here and then being loud so that everybody in the world can hear, they're right there for God's sakes, and we don't need to be cursing, or, we, I just think that we have to be calm and speak to people.
I understand, but you don't understand...
Hang on a minute, hang on.
You say we're not even fair and adequate.
Hang on, Ms. Jordan, maybe you missed my saying that, that we're going to shut down the conversation on this, and I had already moved to Mrs. Dupree Bruno, who was been, has been talking about a different topic, and I already said we're shutting it down, and that I have an appointment to one-on-one with, with Dr. Savage and anybody else who wants a one-on-one to discuss it, so that's, that's already been resolved.
Correct, well, thank you. And even, and even speaking with, to Mr. Dupree Bruno, it's the same thing, we have to treat each other with respect. I mean, seriously.
And, and that's, you're absolutely right. Let's just go back to Mrs. Dupree Bruno, it's her turn to speak, and I feel like at this point, any other conversation that we have, even, you know, this is the thing with the sunshine law, that on the one hand, there are obviously issues that have to be brought out among us, and with the sunshine, this is the only time we can do it, but I think we have gone into the realm of we need one-on-ones, I think we've put it out there, and I'm going to echo what Ms. Gittens said on the earlier topic, that I also, and I copied the board and Ms. Giovanni, on that earlier topic, were you also one that was upset with the release?
Yes, but I didn't really get to finish, because there was more to that, there was from last night, that the decorum was not followed, I mean, we, there's, there's so much that happened last night, and that, that is a conversation that we need to be having, we can't just keep putting it off because it upsets somebody or we're getting loud. Yes, I'm being passionate, but that's not loud, I don't, just, in fact, I am worried for these two people sitting in this seat, because we have board members that are rogue, I'm sorry, but that's a fact. If you don't realize it, you should have last night, I'm sorry, and I was in shock, and it was not fair to even put a staff member involved in that, and that's what's happened. I didn't even realize that until this morning. So I mean, we have to, at some point, when do we become a board and take charge and do something? Because we, we can't be cut off, we need to be able to finish what we're saying and what we're thinking. They need to know what we're saying, it needs, the public needs to know, this can't be, we can't be silent any longer, we can't keep kicking the can down the road.
And I agree with you, that does need to be addressed.
And I don't know how we can do any kind of training when you have this, and you know what, I don't, I can't do next week, that's what I need, want to talk about, I can't do next week after this. Last night showed that we will not get anywheres, when we all sat silent to what was going on, when, and I'm sorry, but it, we are all guilty of allowing someone to disrespect the public, they're not here for that. You take it outside, you make it your own, you make it your own problems outside, I did not bring mine in, and I had them.
And may I just say, please, my whole...
No clapping, please.
My whole, my whole point was, when I said, what, a half hour ago, I would like to do this first before Ms. Patrica left, my intent was to ask her to just explain to us what happened, and then I wasn't accusing the superintendent or staff or any, so please don't get that twisted. The question was, and the reason I said I would like to do it before she leaves, my question to her would have been, please explain to us how this got into the media. It would have been very simple, but when...
That would have been a great question.
Okay, but how can I ask it if you refuse?
It wasn't asked.
She wasn't able to.
When, when it's, when people refuse, if I just came out and said, okay, Ms. Patrica, that was not, that would not be the way to do it. So I had to make some explanation, but, you know, I don't understand how it always comes down to, we need to work as a team, and this, and this, and this, and yeah, you know, some people keep saying it's not about you, it is, it is at times, and I have to deal with that. But I'm here for kids, the way that I bring stuff out may not be the way you do, or the way you would say it, or you would say it, but when you talk about how we work as a board, we need to be able to understand, I may, like I said the other day, I may talk loud, and you come from a family that talks softly, but don't hold that against the content that I'm trying to share with you and the public. We need to learn how to listen to each other, no matter how it comes and what words. So, like I said, it, it's kind of a moot issue now, because I feel she should have had an opportunity to say what happened and what she did, and I was trying to offer her that opportunity, so.
And can I just say one thing? And let's, let's finish and allow our attorney and...
I just want to apologize to the, actually to the district, to the staff, to anybody that I might have upset, because it wasn't, you know, I didn't mean to, so I apologize if I stepped out of my, you know, lane as a board member, because I truly care about the district, and I apologize to you two people that work very hard every day. So I am very frustrated, because this is not what we should be doing. And so my apologies go to the district and the people and the staff that employed here.
Okay, Mrs. Dupree Bruno, would you like to finish your, your comments about that?
No, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, so I think it's, it's clarified, and Dr. Savage?
I guess one, one more thing I wanted to say, is when there is a letter that is being sent on behalf of the board or to the board, it has to come back to the board for review, because what, it's, it's part of sunshine, they all, seven of them have to take a look at it, just like they do with policies. They all, seven of them, have to take a look at it, just like they do with policies, and just write it up, scratch it up, change it, whatever they want to do. So it's not, Kathy, draft a letter and then mail it out. It's, draft a letter, come back, let's take a look at it, we want this added, this added, or what have you. That's the way the process is supposed to work.
Okay, and, and it fell, I made a, I made a, a motion, there was no second, so it's finny, all right?
That part, but the motion is still on the table.
And individuals can do what they want. Dr. Savage, are you enjoying this time? But let's, let, let him speak, and then I think...
I'm sorry, but you made a statement about individuals can do what we want. We can't do what we want. We are one of seven.
That's the point, that's why we're here.
No, I mean...
We act as a board.
No, I'm, I'm sorry.
That is what, that the whole problem is, though.
I wasn't clear, there, your own, our own letters.
We're sending one anyway.
If we want it to. Dr. Savage?
Well, first off, I just want to say, thank you so much for even offering an apology, and for recognizing that piece, because I, I just have to say, you know, again, it is a real privilege to work in this environment where we have seven elected officials, all very passionate, and, and so yes, it's true, there are disagreements, folks do get upset at times. You know, I'm the executive that works for this, this body, and, and the staff, they report to me. And so one of my obligations is, when I am working with staff, they are working hard, just like you're working hard, just like we're working hard, they're out there working so hard as well. And I just want to assume positive intent. At this level, we focus on policy and then process, and individual staff members, you know, I would just ask that we just not, we try to make every effort not to individually try them here without really following a due process, where they have a chance to speak on their own behalf. That's, this is not the venue for that. I will hold staff accountable as employees, that is my job to do it. But I, all I ask is that we don't rush to judgment and, and then execute that judgment here in this public space, because it's very easy when they're, when folks are very visible in their roles, out there doing their work, it can be very easy to misinterpret that they are doing something at the behest of an individual or whatnot. All I ask is for that time to resolve that piece. Now, if folks are found to be stepping over a line, if individual staff members are not fulfilling their job dues appropriately, then again, it is on me and our folks to hold them accountable for as much. That includes school leaders, that includes anyone who's a staff member in our district. That's our daily work. You as the policymakers, I appreciate your role in this, and I know you definitely hear from a lot of folks who have opinions, and folks who are sometimes disgruntled parents, and, and you get to hear a lot of those issues. I want to develop as much professional mutual respect that we have for our roles, so that you don't feel a need to introduce them here where we can dialogue about it, and it may not end up being a full factual accounting of what really transpired. So thank you for offering up those other venues of one-to-one meetings, making sure we can get deeper into those weeds. That's not to say that we want to hide anything from, from anyone. It's just a matter of having to be able to go through and introduce exhibits and artifacts and all things. That's something that, that takes time, but I feel it's important to be respectful to all of our staff, too, because they are working so hard, and I don't want them to feel disrespected when their name comes up with a negative context. They have no ability to defend themselves, and so, so my only reason for pushing on it in that moment was, I just don't feel like I had enough information, and I don't necessarily want to assume that someone is doing something they're not supposed to do, or that they're working in a way that is not appropriate. So I hope that that came through.
Let him speak.
I hope that that came through. That's really all I wanted to, to clarify for everyone.
Okay, and I'm, I'm going to adjourn this meeting right now. We are adjourned.
It is, okay. It is unfair to say we were against staff.
We are adjourned at 3:09, thank you.
Ms. Giavennelli, I just wanted to say thank you for the apology.
It was not against staff, I was talking about Ms. Patrica.
Because I didn't mean it, but I was just, it's a heathen.
Adjourned.
I mean, I didn't, I didn't...